Deputy Town Manager, ready to begin?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening. I call this March 22 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching the recording of this meeting. On March 25, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisfield.org/government/live-video. This meeting is being facilitated as a hybrid with some members of council attending virtually via Teams meeting and some present in town council chambers. All council members will be able to fully participate in this evening's work. Eric Smith or Town Clerk will now conduct a roll call of council members.
Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Present.
Councilmember Garamella?
Present.
Councilmember Rao?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Present.
All council is present.
Thank you. Prior to further action, I will ask if there is a motion and second to invoke Rule 19.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion from Mayor Protem Johnson and a second from Councilmember Garamella. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Sergeant Penland has been a law enforcement officer for 21 years and is currently assigned to Field Operations Division. He is our sergeant in arms this evening, and we thank him for being here. This time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati for tonight's invocation.
2022 intentions for a happy life. I will be present. I will chase more dreams and less people. I will only associate with pure intentions. I will be mindful of self-limiting thoughts. I will respect the gift that is my intuition. I will laugh more. I will be mindful of self-sabotaging behaviors. I will protect and nourish my inner child. I will only say yes or no when I mean it. I will communicate better with others. I will not fall back into toxic cycles with people. I will embrace change. I will set and stick to my boundaries. I will do what it takes to honor my mental health. I will stay hydrated. I will make the most of what I have to work with. I will always find time to dance. I will release attachments to what isn't for me. I will accept myself. Poetry credits to We the Urban.
Thank you, and I think there will be dancing on Saturday, if I'm not mistaken. All who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands in law, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I gotta say, it's a lot easier to speak up here without a mask. I'm very thankful for everyone in Morrisville and the region who have been doing such a good job and have helped the pandemic really settle down, which allows us to do that. But it's a lot easier, and I really appreciate that. So we're at item seven. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does anyone have any such conflicts? Okay. Seeing none, there are two additions which staff has indicated would be appropriate to add to the agenda. The first is a discussion of consideration of moving our April 26 meeting to Monday, April 25 to facilitate participation in the North Carolina League of Municipalities Annual City Vision Conference, and that can become item 14B as in Boy, and an additional closed session item to discuss a personnel matter, which can be item 17B as in Boy. So those two, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson for her thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to add an item to review the Citizen Advisory Committee attendance policy. A short discussion is all that I am asking for about when that should be reinstated, say, the attendance portion.
Okay. I think that might be appropriate to add that as item 14C as in Charlie. Would that be okay? As an actual?
That would be perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So is there any other additions or changes to the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion and second to adopt the agenda to include the addition of those three items, 14B and C and 17B?
Make that motion.
A second.
Okay. A motion from Councilmember Robati, second from Councilmember Rao. At this time, Town Clerk Smith will facilitate our roll call vote.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the regular agenda with changes passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. There are five items on this evening's consent agenda: a resolution approving Advisory Committee Chair and Vice Chair appointments, approval of Town Council winter meeting minutes, January 28th and 29th, and approval of the February Town Council meeting minutes. Is there anyone who would like to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion and second to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Robati, second from Councilmember Fender, and Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 10, administrative reports. There is one administrative report tonight, a 2021 Advisory Committee Work Plan Year-End Report. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has questions. Are there any questions on this item? Okay. Seeing none, we will move to presentations, item 11. We have two presentations tonight: a proclamation recognizing National Take a Walk in the Park Day and a Triangle Bike Way Project Overview Presentation. I will read the proclamation recognizing National Take a Walk in the Park Day. Whereas exercising outside provides many measurable benefits for physical and mental health, and whereas public parks and green spaces are communities' backyard, they offer nearby residents a place to play, connect, and reap the benefits of the outdoors; and whereas parks are an essential part of improving public health, they provide a place to play, exercise, and commune with nature. They support equitable and thriving communities and protect communities from the impacts of climate. Yet 100 million people, including 28 million kids, do not have access to a quality park within a 10-minute walk from home. And whereas National Walk to a Park Day is not only a celebration of green spaces but is a call to action for cities to ensure everyone across the U.S. has access to a quality park within a 10-minute walk of their home, now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize March 30, 2022, as National Take a Walk in the Park Day and urges people to get outside for a walk in your local park and encourage your community to support more public parks and green spaces. This time, I'd like to ask Randy Little, our Director of Parks and Recreation and Cultural Resources, to come up front, and I'll hand him the proclamation, and then he has some items to share.
Good evening, Mayor Colley and Town Council. This fits very, very well with our National Parks and Recreation mission. One of the mission statements for NRPA, National Recreation Park Association, is connecting kids to nature, so I think this fits very, very well as a part of that mission. Another one is equity too as well. So as we receive this proclamation on behalf of council for the Parks and Recreation Department, we do have a couple of events next Wednesday that what staff will be participating in in, you know, the community too as well. At 10 o'clock, the senior center staff will be hosting a Walk in the Park for the seniors starting at 10 a.m. They'll be there. They're giving away water bottles too, so I think that's gonna be a great day for them to actually be out and about, considering that we're getting great weather these days. So I think that's also a plus. But also, our cultural resources specialist is going to have a scavenger hunt in Northwest Park. It's called Peeps in the Park, the little colorful bunnies that is very fitting at this time because Easter's right around the corner. It's a scavenger hunt where she placed nine different peeps in the park, and those individuals that collects all, that finds all nine, email Ms. Haney, and what she'll do is it'll be dropped off. The peeps will be in the park on Tuesday for Wednesday, so those that find all nine, email her, and we'll give away a prize of some sort to the winner. So those are the two things that we'll be doing next Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Randy, can you just let us know, the Walk in the Park, which park is it?
Oh, I am so sorry. Church Street Park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the Peeps in the Park are Church Street?
The Peeps in the Park is at Northwest Park.
No, oh, you said that one. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The Church Street Park is tomorrow? Is it tomorrow?
Wednesday, March 30.
March 30.
Yes, next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're all taking notes because we all want to attend. Excellent. At this point, we'll have Danielle Kittredge, Senior Planner. She's gonna make the Triangle Bike Way Project Overview Presentation and introduce our guest.
Hi, Danielle Kittredge, and I'm here to introduce the presentation that, is it on? Yeah, sorry. To introduce the presentation you'll be having next. It's regarding the Triangle Bike Way study. So we do have Kenneth Withrow here from Campo, the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. He'll be giving an overview of the study as well as kind of the next steps leading up to it. We thought that this would be a good opportunity to, I know some of the Town Council may be more familiar than others, but to, this is a good point with the study coming out, to have an overview of it. And then we'll also be looking at your next Town Council meeting, a resolution of support and general support for the regional bike way as well. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Kenneth.
Thank you very much, Danielle. Can everyone hear me? Great. Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. Thank you for this privilege of being here at the Town of Morrisville. I think I've been here at least once or twice before in terms of giving a presentation, so it's always good and I welcome and thank you all very much for this privilege of being here. At your places, I think it was apropos, in light of talking about Triangle Bike Way and also being in tune with parks as far as your proclamation, you all have been provided a pen concerning, that is basically symbolic of bicycles, and of course, I have it on my jacket as well. And this is just a note of making people sure they're interested in biking and walking and all the activities we have available in our area. So without further ado, allow me to go ahead and go into the Triangle Bike Way presentation, and I'll be very quick with regard to this. Just to give you a quick background and context for everybody who is here, the Triangle Bike Way was actually begun as an initial thought back in the early 2000s when we developed our first Capital Area MPO Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. The first plan was adopted in 2003, but during that time, as we were developing a bicycle pedestrian plan for the region, the first one, one of the ideas that had percolated was the idea of possibly a bike way along I-40 from Raleigh that would go into Research Triangle Park. We banded about that, talking about that idea for many years. It remained dormant, but it was brought to life in the 2010s, particularly 15, 16, and 17, and presented before the Wade County Commissioners. They pursued a feasibility study for the Triangle Bike Way at that particular time, the I-40 Bike Way between Raleigh and Research Triangle Park. We then looped the Durham Chapel Carboro into this study, and then hence it became the Triangle Bike Way, and we launched its initial, the initial study in 2020 at the beginning of the pandemic. As you can see on the slide here before you, we have all the participants, Durham Chapel Carboro and the Capital Area MPO. McAdam served as the lead planning consultant for this, along with WSP and Tool Design. What I'll quickly do is just go over the agenda and all of the elements associated with the report and where we are at this moment. Before I go any further, I want to also give special thanks to Dale McKeel, who also was project manager on this particular project with the Durham Chapel Carboro MPO. We're trying to do this in both MPOs so that all entities that are along the bike way proposed route will have an opportunity for the presentation. Main thing I wanted to highlight before you are the project goals. There were nine of them, going from equity to resiliency, noting the importance of how we want people to get out and be active on the, in the transportation system beyond just the current highway and road system we have in this area. So that's one thing that was important to note. The second thing we wanted to note is the study area. As you can see, if you go from right to left, for those out in the audience, you're looking from basically the Art Center Bridge in Raleigh by I-440 all the way to 15501 in Chapel Hill. The portion east of the park, Research Triangle Park, that is, is basically being looked at for 30% design when we were initially doing the study. To the west, in the Durham Chapel Carboro MPO proper, all the way between the park and US 15501, since it was new, we had to look at it as a feasibility study. So basically, they were a step behind in the initial aspect of this particular study. For those who have not been following the study, it's on trianglebikeway.com. Of course, you can access it through the Capital Area MPO website. It is up to date with new symbology, and of course, the report is there, and so that has been a very active site as we've been doing this specific study. Well, is this new? Are bikeways relatively, is this just a local thing, or is it a local phenomenon, or is it national? Well, no, it is national. We have bike plans or bike projects or bike facilities that have been established in cities from as far west as Seattle along the I-90 corridor, the US 36 corridor in Colorado between Denver and Boulder, of course, Path 400 in Atlanta, and of course, the Business 40 project that was done in Winston-Salem, the Custis Trail in Maryland, the DC area, and also the Charter Oak Greenway in Connecticut. And let me just go over quickly existing conditions and future plans. The existing facility, of course, is to your left, your planned facility is to your right. Regardless of how you look at it, the Triangle region is developing a very vascular network of greenways and bikeways, and we're hoping to continue to grow that. The Triangle Bike Way, as it stands right now, has been incorporated in the 2050 MTP as well, so that's one thing I wanted to quickly highlight. We have existing and planned transit. Now, one thing I want to note with regard to this, when we were doing this, the inventory consisted of what was done by Go Carry, Go Raleigh, Go Triangle. The current shuttle scenario that you all have in terms of the smart shuttle was not inventoried as a part of this as of yet because it did not become active until October of last year, calendar of 2021. So it could, we could incorporate that, but at this particular time, as we were doing this, it was not inventoried as a part of that. These are the major employers in the area, based on employee size. As you can see, there's a lot of diversity, but heavy intensity of heavy employers, particularly in the Research Triangle Park. Plan developments all along the route between Raleigh, all the way up to Chapel Hill and through Research Triangle Park. And there are many NCDOT projects that have, that are underway, will be underway, or are nearly completed in the general area, particularly the road projects that we're basically focusing on that they, that we've highlighted. The next piece I wanted to basically share with you is the community engagement. Some of the people that you see here are your neighbors, but they're part of Triangle Community, and we wanted to have that engagement universal in terms of the number of participants, whether, whatever ethnic background they were, or whatever income strata they were part of. So we were made sure that we focused and had an opportunity, that provided an opportunity for all persons to be engaged in this process. The community engagement framework is shown here, very in-depth with regard to our working group meetings, our virtual public workshops, various case studies, presentations to our municipal groups. So it was very, there was a lot of depth in this particular process, a lot of public participation throughout the study from the beginning all the way to the end, with particular emphasis on the survey points that we had from July to December of 2020, no, July to November 2020, excuse me, and in the month of June of 2021. One of the things I wanted to quickly note is the community engagement approach that we had. Again, I mentioned the multi-jurisdictional coordination, which included Raleigh, Cary, Morrisville, Durham, and Chapel Hill. We had a lot of broad stakeholder support. Again, I'm mentioning meaningful engagement, intentional engagement with under-engaged groups, and during this time, of course, we were at the peak of COVID, we had to really adapt quickly to ensure that there was proper engagement during the pandemic. One of the things I wanted to highlight as far as three-tiered piece is the stakeholder coordination, the focus groups, the key piece is the working group, and I'll talk about that more in depth. Had nine working group meetings, a lot of participation, maybe some of you all were on those calls, but we had a lot of discussion with regard to the project as it progressed through the, through the project timeline. And the working group is basically established here from corporate to elected officials, greenways, groups, all types of people from various walks of life were really engaged in this particular study. So it was very active. Of course, during the time of our gathering of survey and getting materials from people in terms of our questionnaires, a lot of people presented challenges, but the biggest and overwhelming piece was the funding piece. And so that's always going to be a challenge with us, even from this point into the, to a future construction project, there will always be that funding challenge, but that was very important for us to note. Excuse me. One of the things I wanted to quickly highlight were the survey results. The first survey that was done back between November of, between July and November of 2020, we garnered 2,116 responses. It ebbed and flowed, particularly in the month of September, as the study was really, really ramping up, and we figured, let's carry it out till November just to see what we could capture, and we had a great response rate. Fast forward to July, June, July of 2021, within the span of 30 days, we had 2,009. We made sure there was a definite cutoff date. We had a lot of people responding to the surveys that were presented, and we got a lot of good input. One of the things that we found from the studies, that the majority of residents wanted a protected and separate bicycle facility. That made sense, and we understood why people would want that. Two in three residents wanted or would use, if a bike way were constructed, would use it at least once a week. Two in three residents, and 90% of the residents would prefer a multimodal commute. And so we see people want to have more choices in their transportation options beyond just using the car as a standard in our area, and so we want to make that provision available. Along with what had been discussed, we looked at various routes that were studied in our alternative analysis piece, which occurred during the fall of 2020 through winter of 2021. A lot of elements were studied at that particular time, which included looking at the environment, connectivity, constructability, the real estate market, route efficiency permitting, future plans, getting input from the stakeholders. So that's why it's important that that public input piece be incorporated as a part of this study. After all of the analysis was done by our consultant team and all the review that was provided, we had come up with a preferred alternative, beginning, of course, I'm going from left to right, so from 15501 in Chapel Hill, following 54, hugging along I-40 through Research Triangle Park with some opportunities beyond 40 in Research Triangle Park, then reconnecting close to 40 as we go beyond the Wade County boundary into Raleigh at Wade Avenue and ending again at the I-440 Art Center Bridge. The western portion is before you. You see to the top right, one of the iconic bridges we would like to possibly build, crossing there at the bridge near 54 and I-440, I mean I-40, excuse me. And then the eastern portion, this iconic bridge is being looked at for the Blue Ridge Road location between, of course, the fairgrounds and the North Carolina Museum of Art, and what could possibly be designed in light of the interest there. The typical section is before you, and of course, we see the width, basically a 20-foot width from edge of gravel piece to edge of gravel piece, including a six-foot portion for walkers, along with bikers having a five-foot section on both sides going in each direction. So we have that available, and of course, we have some things associated with bridge work that would be occur, that would be built where there are needed bridges for pier construction and things of that particular nature. So this is what we have in terms of a bike way. One of the things that we want to note also is the opportunity for lighting and other amenities that would be appropriate and could be added to the project as we move forward. Next, of course, is the report. Basically, one of the things we included in the report is the forward by both our chairs for the Executive Board Committees in the Durham Chapel Carboro area and the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. The content of the report is before you, from chapters one through five, and including significant information in the appendices. The current next steps are for implementation of that, and we have several implementation scenarios that we could look at, or there's a suite of them. From accelerated, if we can get it on the ground as quick as we possibly can, great. If it's gradual, that's another thing that we have to take into account because time is a significant variable in this particular process, and so let me go over those very quickly. An accelerated process talks about a way in which it could be done in the fastest manner possible, and of course, it would, in terms of cons, would require a successful raise grant, and so if we're looking at that particular piece, that's something that's significant. A slower process, if it's incremental, you're looking at several other suite of financial structures that would be utilized for the process, and again, it would be slower. It's feasible, and we note that municipal projects may have higher priorities than this regional project, so there has to be an intention on the municipalities to prioritize this particular project. So that's if we were to go incremental. Then there's the gradual piece, which would be funded by NCDOT, and of course, this takes time, just like any other transportation project. We've had transportation projects that have been planned out 20 years ago, still are on the books, have not been constructed yet, so that's one of the gradual pieces. And the last one is just, even if a state match were included, there are other issues that are significant in terms of pros and cons for a gradual process for this particular project. So there's some things that the committee is going to have to think about. And we note the various strategies associated with the implementation piece. And one of the things I want to quickly highlight for you all is this, the working group is now being transitioned into the Triangle Bike Way Regional Advisory Committee. When we first set up a stakeholder group for our first bicycle pedestrian plan for Capitol Area MPO, we morphed it from an advisory, from a stakeholder group into the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Now we're doing the same thing with this. However, instead of it being strictly within the Capitol Area MPO, this is going to be regional because it is a regional project. Therefore, we're going to involve the Durham Chapel Carboro, will be involved in this, of course, and the coordination piece will be done through TJ COG. Our first meeting will be at 3:00 PM on Friday, and I know some people have received the email about it. If you're interested, let me know, or let Danielle know, and she can let me know, and we'll still continue to look to have inter-jurisdictional cooperation for this particular process. The review and adopted schedule is before you. It's been presented before the TCC. It was presented to the executive board this past Wednesday. It will be out for 30-day public comment review from March 16th through April 19th with an adoption schedule for April 20th. So without further ado, I wish to thank you all for this opportunity, and I will entertain some questions at this time. So thank you.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
This is a really exciting project. I, I'm really excited about it. I wonder, have you, was there any discussion at all of any type, offering any type of electric charged bikes or, you know, with chargers at each, at each point, so that people, you know, if people don't have their own bike, they could still use the, this gateway, this greenway to go to work?
It was, we talked about electric bicycles, without a shadow of a doubt. The issue is, who would be the proprietor of an electric bicycle system? Because we, of course, Raleigh has their own system, and I forgot the other community that has another one in the region. So one of the things would have to be discussed, if this infrastructure were to be in place, who would manage that? And that's another thing that's very key, as we look to build this bikeway, how is it going to be maintained from municipality to municipality and in working with NC DOT as this project is constructed and built? So there's, those things are, can be considered, and that's something that the Triangle Bike Way Regional Advisory Committee will be taking up as we continue to purposely move forward with this project.
That's great, because when you talk about, I mean, you've already talked about the engagement that you sought from underrepresented communities, and I think that a key way to get underrepresented communities involved in the project once it's completed and actually use the bikeway would be to, to provide some bikes.
Understood. Thank you.
Tim Johnson, please.
So I've got a question, but a couple of comments first. First, I want to say, Kenneth, it's great to see you in person. It's been a long time. Thank you for all your hard work, and I'm glad you talked about the history of this project, because this is one of those transformational projects that had to take time because there were multiple jurisdictions involved, multiple planning agencies, the private sector, and you talked a lot about the community engagement, and that was really important to make sure that folks were engaged and supportive and that their input was input into the, into the final results. So, so thank you for all that. That's, kudos to all of you. And you talked about next steps, and I'm, and I don't want to ask Danielle to come up till, till she's ready. Maybe there's a, oh, there you are, Danielle. I thought you went back there. I, you know, I'd like to know what our next steps are here for the town, and I know we talked about a resolution that, that we'll, we'll adopt probably at the next meeting, but next steps for us is important too, so that we do our part, because this is important for our residents and our business community, and we certainly want to be, well, I don't want to talk for everybody, we all haven't had the opportunity yet, but I certainly want to make sure that I continue to be as supportive of this project as I have been all these years when it first started. And I don't know who, who's our core representative, because this, this, this idea really started back with Triangle J and that whole core group, because I was on.
I was there the first time it was presented.
So, so there are lots of people that have had their hands in this project and made sure it did not die, maybe slowed down a little bit, like you talked about, Kenneth, but certainly did not die, and none of us were going to let it die. So I'm really excited about the project as well. So yeah, next steps, Danielle, is my question.
And right now, what I have is rather pretty, a general at this point in time. I mean, we will have the, more of the general resolution of support for the project as a whole. Some of it will also come down to the different scenarios that Kenneth was mentioning, which route does this project ultimately take with regard to funding scenarios and different things along the way? So I anticipate I will be back before you with some additional information as, as things progress, but a lot of it, I think, will have to come down to which route does the funding go, but there will likely be municipal partnerships along the way that either comes in the form of potentially funding or maintenance types of requirements. Those have not been worked out or anything at this point in time, and just still being explored. So we will keep you, keep you posted along the way as what goes on, but, you know, that's unfortunately, all, all that I can offer right now.
Well, that's okay. That's good. And I, again, I want to speak for everybody, but I have a feeling we're going to be very happy to see you when you come to talk about this project. This really reminds me of our Crabtree Hatcher Greenway system that also took more than a decade to finally come to fruition, and, and it is so loved and so used for not only recreation, but for getting around town now. So that, that is, this is that, you know, double or triple, so very excited. So thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight and for all your hard work on the project. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And I just want to key in, participation on the regional advisory committee is very, very key in this process, because they will be the ones that will be reporting to the various MPO executive boards, TCC, about upcoming issues associated with the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Kenneth, this is great. Had a couple of quick questions. Look from the preferred alternative on the slide, that it looks like it's going to be on this side of 40 in the Morrisville area.
Yes.
That's a real positive for us, so that's another reason for us to be part of that work group, is to make sure that stays that way.
Yes.
Because it's more convenient for us. Has there been discussions about the actual composition of the greenway itself? I ask, because a few years ago, I remember seeing something about a solar greenway in like Denmark or something?
Yeah, there have been no discussions of that particular nature. That's where the, again, where the advisory committee is going to be key in terms of those components with regard to the particular project. What are the features that will be added? How will it meet the needs of the various clients who are going to be using it? So that's where there'll be discussions.
Okay, because we are very green here in Morrisville, so we'd love to promote that, at least along our portion. Councilmember Garamella.
Yeah, thanks a lot for this presentation. You know, while you're giving the presentation, a lot of old memories going through, because I think Sigurdsson gave the first pitch on it four, five years ago at Triangle COG, you know, and I think the core committee, and he came twice. And at the time, I joked with him saying that, I think this is a better option because on, you know, when it is peak time, I can go faster from this bike lane than being on 40. And I also said to him was, where is the money? You know, because we got to expand I-40, and none of you are talking about this project. And I think the original design was still Morrisville, they did not go beyond Chapel Hill and other things. They came later, that it was from Raleigh to Morrisville. And he said, oh, it will start from Raleigh and the end would be Morrisville, so you'll be the gateway. And, but I'm so excited about this, that it's finally coming to fruition. And my question is, you're talking about the match, how would the towns which are in part of this match know early on? Because we have our competing budgets, but at the same time, we don't want to be the only, I would say, orphan place, which is not getting the funding and then the work is not getting done. Will you guys give us that ahead notice so that, you know, the staff can see a way of how we can do it as, because it's a regional project, you know, we don't want anything affected?
Yes. This is fluid in terms of the funding piece. No defined funding mechanisms have been established yet in terms of construction for this. We do know that there is a government that is wanting to go into 100% design with NEPA. That's as far as it's gotten at this particular moment in time. Those other things are going to have to be worked out over time. And even the piece that I was talking about with regard to the other government, that has to still be worked out over time. But it's a fluid situation, a lot of things are variables up in the air. The key, the constant is that committee staying committed, excuse me, and involved to ensure that these things occur.
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Deputy Town Manager.
For those that may be watching and may not know, could you explain what NEPA is, please? Thank you.
Yes. NEPA is the National Environmental Protection Agency. That is very key component as we were doing, let me do a quick history. Before there was NEPA, we had issues concerning pollution and all other things that were associated with highway and transportation development. Well, people being concerned about the environment said, well, hey, let's stop, let's have these issues addressed beyond just building a particular highway facility. And so you have to have NEPA as a part of the process before you do a construction project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't see any other questions, so thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing you again. Danielle, if you want to go to the mic and just let us know, do we have staff on that work group?
Yes, we do. There's myself and I know Kate Love Allred, as well as Kyle from Parks and Rec are currently on that committee.
Okay, so you're looking out for the Morrisville residents and businesses. Okay, wonderful. Ms. Winslow, thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you again, and I think Mayor Protem has something, she's saying thank you for the bike.
I was just saying thank you for the pins. I'm trying to mouth it. Thank you.
Appreciate the pins. Okay. Excellent. It is 6:42 at this time. We are scheduled to take a 15-minute break, so why don't we go ahead and reconvene at 6:58. Okay, see you then. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Shizum, all set? Okay. It's 6:58. I'm going to bring us back into session. We are at item 12, Public Address. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received, if any.
No, sir, there were no public comments received.
Okay, and no one signed up for this evening?
There was. One individual signed up to speak this evening, Kumanan Marugasan.
Okay. If you'd like to come to the microphone there, you'll have three minutes to speak on any subject that you wish. If you've got the three, three minutes, just please finish your thought, and you can email us anything else. Please, Nate, state your name and residential address for the record.
Good evening, Council. My name is Savita. I live at 2020 Kirk Haven Road. I'm here on behalf of my husband. He's stuck at the Town of Morrisville practice session basketball. I'm here representing the group of basketball enthusiasts who are trying to have more basketball courts installed in the Town of Morrisville. I was here last month at the public meeting, public address, with a bunch of moms, dads, and kids, and I'm here to follow up on what we, on our cause to have more courts installed. I want to add that as a result of our consistent coming to meetings, the only outdoor court at Shadow Park is in playable condition. The courts have been resurfaced and the hoops have been fixed, so we have kids going back to the court every evening since this has happened, and thank you for that. But I'm also here to follow up on our other requests to have fencing and lights installed, and also our request to have more basketball courts in the Town of Morrisville. I know you're not, you're required to answer me right now, but I just want to hear, I mean, I want myself to be heard, and I just wanted to request the town to, you know, consider our requests, and we've, we've, we've done everything we can in our, in our, you know, what we can do and, and as requested by you, right? So what else do you want us to do to have a project allocated this year, to have at least one or two courts installed? And then, you know, the last we heard was, we don't have any funding for more courts this year, but it probably will be get, will begin like next year, but that would be too late, and nothing has been done, as we mentioned earlier, for basketball by the town, so we're requesting to have more courts. And I just wanted to keep coming back to the meeting and get ourselves heard, as I've, as I've heard before from one of your councilmen, that the squeaky wheel gets the oil. So I, I just want to repeat that, and I just want to be the squeaky wheel, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Was there anyone else in the audience who didn't sign up who wished to speak for three minutes? Okay, seeing none. Our budget portal has closed for this period, but we will have more input opportunities for this year's budget coming up in the April-May timeframe. And always, we welcome our residents to email us at towncouncil@townofmorrisfield.org. So we're always available through that. So thank you very much. And thank you to staff for addressing the concerns about the courts and making them more playable. We always appreciate that. Thank you very much. We're moving on to item 13 now, Public Hearing. There are two public hearing items on tonight's agenda, a proposed amendment of the zoning map for 1624 Wilson Road and Zero Wilson Road, and a resolution of public hearing and adoption of second reading for two-thirds go bonds for public safety improvements. Kate Murdoch, Planner One, will facilitate the first item. Ms. Murdoch.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Council. It's good to see you all again. So at the last meeting, two weeks ago, I presented to you items for the consideration of zoning map amendments for 1624 Wilson Road and Zero Wilson Road. I have no further updates for you at this point on the proposed rezoning, but I know that you had left the public hearing open. Do you, you have any further questions or comments for myself or for the property owner? I'm sorry, is the mic?
A little closer to it, maybe?
Is this, this working better?
Not quite.
All right, can we hear me now?
Okay, so looking to see if anyone has any questions for the applicant or for staff? Okay, you answered a lot of questions last time, and we got a chance to hear from the applicant in the past. So seeing no questions, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion. Second.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing. I'd like to ask Town Clerk Smith to do a roll call vote on that motion, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Raoul?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing, passage and enter.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Any comments or discussion before we vote? Okay. Is there a motion and second to adopt ordinance 2022-32-0, and do we have to read it more than that, or is that sufficient?
Sure.
That's sufficient, okay. Councilmember Garamella.
Yeah, I think, did we put a limit on the housing, like, you know, of how many they would be? Because I know the applicant said they can't do more than a certain number. Is that in that motion, or?
Is that a condition added and included?
It is not, if I recall correctly. Let me pull that up for us to see.
That's a good point. That was provided verbally?
Yes.
At the last meeting?
I wanted to be.
Do we need to codify that, I guess?
Exactly.
The town attorney? Do you have an opinion on that? I think, was the number seven?
Seven units, right, I think the applicant said. So if that can be put in that as a condition.
So if we were to do that, we would have to come back at the next meeting, I believe. So if we were to do that, we would have to come back at the next meeting, I believe, for you to take action on it. We'd have to adjust the ordinance. And Director?
It's quite a understanding topic.
So the condition, what we were asking was what you had verbally accepted, that it wouldn't be more than seven units?
Yes.
So I wanted that as part of the conditions for approval.
Yes, not more than seven units.
And that's what I was asking to be incorporated, because the current one doesn't have that. And so to which Kate said, like, she has to come back, so I'm just hearing for the next one.
Ms. Stiegel, if you want your name and role for the record.
Yeah, sure. Michelle Stiegel, Planning Director. And if that is the council's preference, obviously, we could work with the applicant to do that, bring back updated sign conditions to you. There is a substantial conformance condition, so I think that's built on the property needs to be in substantial conformance with the application that was submitted, and the letter in the application indicates seven units, and the sketch plan attached also shows several, seven units, so we could rely on that as well.
Okay, so as long as there is some binding somewhere that goes with it. Technicality, I would leave to you guys, but I just wanted to ensure that it's safe.
If you want to state your name and your role for the record, sir, you can address the group as well.
This is Bal Sharma, owner of the land. I was requesting Kate to show the map, so you can see what was, what is being proposed. Of course, this is not a subdivision application, but this was to support what we're planning to do. Thank you.
Okay. I guess if we could ask the town attorney his thoughts on this.
To the filing director's point, the first paragraph of the ordinance before you says that science shall be developed in reasonable conformance with the sketch plan that the applicant submitted. I think that's adequate to the line. Cap 7, lots.
Okay, so we could feel comfortable that staff would push back on anything larger than that, and we'd be legally able to do that, sir?
Yes, sir.
To meet your needs, Councilmember Garamella? Okay. Excellent. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati. Did you have a thought?
No, my, I'm sorry, my question was answered.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Town Attorney Gray. At this time then, is there a motion and second to adopt ordinance 2022-32-0?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-32-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving a zoning map amendment for 1624 Wilson Road and 0 Wilson Road from the low-density residential zoning district to the conditional medium-density residential zoning district,
And a second from Councilmember Robati. We have a motion and a second. Town Clerk Smith will conduct a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Raoul?
Aye.
Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protam-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to approve ordinance 2022-32-0, passage unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Murdoch. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay. Now we'll move on to the next item. Nancy Elmsley, our Finance Director, will facilitate the next public hearing.
Good evening, everyone. Just to give you a quick update, if you recall, we were quite busy on our March 8 meeting. We had a lot of things we needed to accomplish in order to continue with the issuance of our two-third GO bonds. So on this, on the 8th, we actually adopted the preliminary findings resolution. We introduced the bond order. We directed the filing of the sworn statement of debt and the statement of total estimated interest. We also set a public hearing for this evening, and we directed the publication of the two-thirds bond order, which was published in the News and Observer on March 11 of this month. So as part of the briefing package, I provided to you a bond schedule. So the next thing that we need to do with the governing body is to actually conduct the public hearing and adopt a two-thirds bond order. And that, we would need to do this this evening, so I recommend that we conduct the public hearing as required and then adopt the second reading of the bond order. And then you'll see me again on April 12 for the final part of this trilogy, which is to actually adopt the bond order itself for the voted bonds that we did in November, and also for the two-third bonds that we're voting on today. So you'll see me again.
Okay. Wonderful. I'd like to declare the public hearing open at this time. So now it's open. Do we have anyone signed up for the public hearing, sir?
No, sir, there was no one signed up for the public hearing.
Anyone here in the room for this purpose? Okay, seeing none, since this was duly noted and everything, even though we just opened it, I would feel comfortable closing it. People who have had an opportunity and good notice on this, so I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Town Clerk Smith will conduct a roll call vote to close the public hearing, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Raoul?
Aye.
Mayor Protam-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to close the public hearing, passage unanimously.
Great. I have a quick question about what's showing on the screen. Are we able to count Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson as being present for this document, or?
I actually will show her on the resolution as attending virtually.
Okay, that's great. Just wanted to make sure we're dotting all our i's.
Yes.
Is there any discussion on this item? We got a pretty robust briefing last time. At this time, is there a motion and second to adopt Resolution 2022-63-0?
It's actually 63-A.
I apologize. My red line is incorrect, so.
I'll make that motion.
If you could read it out, then.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2022-63-A of the Morrisville Town Council for public hearing and adoption of second reading of two-thirds bond order. Second.
Motion and second. Town Clerk Smith will conduct a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Raoul?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protam-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to approve ordinance 2022-63-A, passage unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. You mentioned that you were going to see you again. Anything else we should know before then?
I'll see you on the 12th.
Okay, thank you very much for all your hard work. We are now at item 14, Action Items. There is one action item on tonight's agenda, adoption of the Wake County nondiscrimination ordinance to be applicable within the corporate limits of the Town of Morrisville. Martha Page, our Town Manager, will facilitate the item. Ms. Page.
Thank you, Mayor. Council discussed this item in length at our winter meeting in January. A copy of that presentation is attached for your review. Attorney Lori Jones with Jordan Price did the yeoman's work on providing counsel the history and the context of a nondiscrimination ordinance for the Town of Morrisville, in particular, the fact that while many municipalities had adopted an ordinance shortly after the repeal of HB 3 in December of 2020, the ability to enforce any complaints was something that had been left behind, and that is what Morrisville was working on. So really want to appreciate Lori for doing all of that work. Frank and I will attempt to answer your questions in her absence. She is at a trial, and we were second place tonight for her needs. In our simple format, Wake County adopted a nondiscrimination ordinance, which became effective in February. The city of Raleigh, as an example, sort of signed on to that, and Wake County has put some efforts into establishing an enforcement mechanism through an agreement with the Campbell Law School that they would provide the complaint mediation and consolation of complaints. Our ordinance would allow that to be applied in Morrisville through an interlocal agreement we would sign on with Wake County. That has been offered to many of the other municipalities in Wake County, and most of them, from my understanding, are considering the same action as we are. And the price for us doing that is a nominal $1,000 a year to sign on to that agreement. I think both the legal staff and the town staff support and recommend adoption of this ordinance and the authorization to execute the ILA for enforcement of any complaints. And Frank and I are happy to answer any questions.
So would the $1,000 be our total exposure?
That is correct.
So even if we're sued?
They have worked out a flat fee approach based on population size for all of the municipalities in Wake County, so we pay a relatively nominal amount as compared to some of the other municipalities. And that would be whether there was one complaint, no complaints, or 10 complaints.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Robati, please, followed by Councilmember Fender?
Councilmember Fender was definitely first.
I believe you. Councilmember Fender?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Martha. I'm really glad we are doing this. I had just one question on the last paragraph of the ordinance, and trying to understand what that means. I'm trying to pull it up.
Eric, could you go to that?
This, the one section two, where it says that this ordinance doesn't apply concerning bids or proposals?
Correct, and I'm going to try, and Frank's going to, we have our individual purchasing and contracts rules, so we would be responsible for handling any complaints of that type. So it's just an exempt provision. It doesn't mean someone couldn't come, file a complaint, but we would have to handle it ourselves. Frank? Am I accurate?
So we're, if you adopt this tonight, you would be adopting the Wake County ordinance and making it applicable in Morrisville.
Right.
But part of their ordinance is to say anybody who bids on work in Wake County has to attest that they're, combined with, that doesn't really apply to us. We do that separately with our own vendors, in our own contract office. We don't need to adopt that part of the Wake County ordinance.
Yep, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robati, followed by Mayor Protam.
Yeah, actually, my comment is on the same section, and I would like, I'd still like some clarification there, because my concern is that if, I mean, if the Wake County nondiscrimination ordinance concerning bids is not significantly different than the one that we have in place now, I would rather see us replace that and have one ordinance that covers all complaints of that type in the same way. I don't want there to be a situation where someone who is in a bid situation or a proposal situation has a complaint or a question and doesn't know where to take it, because, or they take it to Wake County, that's not the right place. I think it would be, can you just explain to me why it's not better to just adopt the Wake thing?
Well, one, because Wake doesn't want us, to include us in that, so they have exempted that as a provision of what they would enforce. But as Frank sort of mentioned, we have some language in our own purchasing and bid proposals, and people could complain. We would have to address those types of things, and all of that is something that we go through as a part of our purchasing processes as well, to protect both the vendor and the town from those issues.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protam-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Raoul.
So Frank, in your memo that's attached, you talked about how this agreement has to be executed on an annual basis. So does that mean council annually needs to vote on this?
That would just be the interlocal agreement for enforcement.
Okay.
Not the nondiscrimination ordinance.
That's right, okay.
But the agreement of how it would be enforced with the Campbell Law School process.
Okay, and at any time, we could withdraw if we chose to do something differently, to be more restrictive or whatever?
Correct.
Or less, or whatever. Okay, I like that idea. I like the idea that, because this $1,000 fee is clearly going to change over time, too, so, you know, maybe in time, we'll be able to handle this internally at a more financially beneficial position for.
And if I may, make a couple of comments. First, Wake County has executed that agreement with Campbell, and as soon as we would execute this, they're giving us three free months. We don't have anything to pay before June 30. They are absorbing any costs of that agreement through June 30. So the execution of the agreement really is July 1, 2022. Council always adopt, or authorizes execution of things like interlocal agreements and MOUs, but it could be a consent item in the future, and as Frank mentioned, it does not change the nondiscrimination ordinance. We would have to change our nondiscrimination ordinance language to indicate that there was going to be an alternative way that we were going to handle enforcement, but not the premise of why we have the nondiscrimination ordinance.
Yes, yeah, no, I'm talking specifically about the agreement with Wake County and how to handle the.
And then I'll just offer, which is a very positive thing, it may be counterintuitive, in all of the cities I've spoken to, and I think perhaps Lori might say the same, there have been no complaints filed, so there's no experience, which is a great thing, to know how the process will go, because there hasn't been any complaints, and I consider that pretty positive.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Raoul, please.
Excuse me. Yeah, I just want to thank the staff and the council for supporting this. I think it's so important for us to address inclusivity, and this is a great step forward. My only question to the town attorney is, and maybe you've already answered this, but in the event that the General Assembly did, you know, I know that we don't think they're going to do that, but if they came back in a year or two years and asked for these repeals legally, would that, the onus would be on the county then, right, to go through the process of repealing that ordinance, if that were the case? How would that work? Like what happened in Charlotte? In Charlotte?
The underlying ordinance is the county ordinance, and so if the authority goes away, then the county would have to repeal the ordinance.
And I don't think that's going to happen, based on what we've talked about and observed, but in this environment, you really never know, so just to be prepared if that were to happen. But the authority is coming from the county, right? So it's, we've signed on to the county ordinance, similar to what we did with the mask.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
The authority comes from the legislature, and then the county has exercised the authority.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, and then we've adopted that within Morrisville corporate limits, if you pass it.
Thank you. Great work.
Okay, seeing no other questions, is there a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-96-0?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Town Clerk Smith will conduct a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Raoul?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protam-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to approve Resolution 2022-96-0, passage unanimously.
Okay, thank you all very much. There's a little time coming, but we really appreciate the work by Ms. Jones behind the scenes, and Town Manager Page, and Frank. Thank you so much. We are now at 14B, as in Boy, one of our new agenda items. I'd like to recognize Town Manager Page.
Thank you, Mayor. At each place, and I've sent this information to Councilmember Schraggins-Johnson as well, we have put the agenda for the City Vision, which is the League's annual conference. A number of our council members actively participate in the League, on boards and committees, and often council members and staff attend this event. Their scheduled this year conflicts was one of the meetings that we approved on our calendar, the second meeting in April, which is currently scheduled for April 26. While their conference is just getting started that day, there are meetings that council members may be interested in attending, and the agenda itself starts very early on Wednesday morning. The conference is in Wilmington, so there is some travel time, as well as potential hotel accommodations, if there are council members that want to attend this event, and there are typically staff that also attend this event.
event. And there are typically staff that also attend this event with the council members. We have modified our council calendar for this type of event at least twice than I can remember. One was for an NLC meeting that was in Charlotte and for a, a second national North Carolina League of Municipalities meeting, that we moved the meeting to facilitate the attendance at this agenda, or at this meeting. So the, the potential option for council to discuss is whether you want to consider moving our April 26th meeting to Monday, April 25th.
Okay. Any discussion on that, Pro, Workon? Councilmember Rowe?
I, I want to attend the League, and I, I'm in favor of having the meeting on Monday. However, when we approved the calendar, I had committed to a work obligation. Now the pandemic is coming to end, I'm having to travel and get around a little bit more. And so I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to get out of that. I, I think I will be able to get back by maybe 6:30 or 7:00, but I just feel bad. I don't want to hold the, you know, council up. And I, I'll do the best I can to get here by 6:00, but, you know, so I don't know if that would be okay with the council, but, so that's the only conflict I have.
Yeah, I'd be fine with you adding yourself to the meeting a little bit late, necessary. Are you asking to delay the start of the meeting?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I just normally, when we do that, that was just in that one meeting, and I don't think I've been late in the last, for a long time.
Okay. So you're supportive of the move to the Monday?
Yeah, I'm supportive of the move.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Robati?
I just wanted to let everybody know that I'll be asking permission to attend that meeting remotely. I don't actually care if it's on Monday or Tuesday, but I, I'll be attending remotely.
Okay. And I guess that'll bring up another discussion of, that'll be a voting, you're requesting to participate remotely and vote, or just participate remotely and not vote, as, as has been our, in the past, before COVID.
I guess I'm asking to participate remotely and vote if possible. And if it's a big deal, then I'm asking to participate remotely and not vote.
Okay. Sounds good. So generally supportive of moving to the 25th, though, is what I heard from you.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
I'm in favor with moving the meeting. I think the League conference is important enough that we attend. It, it, there's a, a wealth of information that's shared at the conference, and it's, I think, our, our really one and only opportunity as elected officials to, to attend specific educational opportunities geared toward elected officials. And of course, networking, that goes without saying. So I'm typically not one that likes to move council meetings. But, and Martha's right, we have done this in the past very infrequently, but I'm okay with moving it to the 25th.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Yes, I am in favor of moving it to a Monday. And I understand there are some, you know, challenges for several council members, but I would say as long as we can invoke Rule 19 on that date, and it's legal, I would like to be in favor of allowing for remote voting.
Okay.
For that meeting.
I would also support moving it to the 25th, and I'm ambivalent on the voting, but if people are gonna be missing, I think it's better to let them vote than not, still at this time. Would anyone else like to make comments?
No, I'm in supportive. Sorry for my confidence. I'm in supportive of moving. I have an obligation for that meeting, 3:30 to 7:00, that conflicts with.
So you need to be in Wilmington at that time, so it'd be problematic for you to, okay? Understood.
And if I just, just didn't, full clarification, council could choose to invoke Rule 19 as long as the state of emergency is in effect at that point in time.
Right.
If, if it would be rescinded before the meeting, we would not have that option to offer.
And we don't have to make that decision right now, correct? So, but we do need to make the motion right now to move our meeting officially from the 26th to the 25th. So I'd entertain that motion now?
I'll make a motion to move the town council meeting currently scheduled for Tuesday, April 26th, to Monday, April 25th at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Motion and second. Town Clerk Smith will do a roll call vote on that motion, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any last thoughts on that one, Town Manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We will, we will make sure that that is information that is shared with the public, so they are aware.
Okay, excellent. We're now at item 14C, as in Charlie. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson to sort of discuss and share her thoughts on this item for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. To the council, I would just like to say that during the COVID pandemic, we had previously discussed the attendance policy for the citizen advisory committees as being suspended temporarily due to the fact that there is various changing conditions for our committees. They were not, they were put on hold, they were invoked remotely. Now there's some optional in-person meetings coming about. So at this time, I would like for the council to consider reinstating the attendance policy for the committee members, not looking backwards, but looking forward. So, for example, starting April 1st, the attendance for all members of the committee would, would be counted for those April meetings, and so on and so forth. And the policy as written would be given warnings to those that weren't attending several meetings, depending on the frequency of the meetings. That would depend on how it was counted. And then ultimately, if someone was not able to attend a correct amount of meetings, it would be dismissed. One of the nuances to this is whether or not this attendance policy would be a rolling calendar or a, you know, a proper calendar, January through December, and restarting in January. So that's a secondary issue. The primary issue is, when should we reinstate that policy? April 1st, May 1st, I know that staff was looking to start that in June to align with the new group of appointees, so they would all start at the same time, the previous members and the new appointees. But I almost think that's too late. I'd rather see that sooner than later. I'm open to May, but I just brought April as an example. So I'll stop there and let council discuss.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati.
I would be fine with starting the attendance policy back up in April and then ending the year in June, and then starting everybody on the, on a June calendar, if that's when the terms begin and end. I think that it makes sense to begin and end the attendance year there also. And also, I would like, if possible, if we're doing this, I think that we should send a letter out to all the committee members, possibly, you know, just letting them know how many absences they had in the past year, just so they can, you know, just so they can understand that this is the new year and we, you know, from now until April, they can only have however many it is. And then going forward, or from now until June, they can only have however many it is. And then going forward, the year will pick up in June, and the absences will count starting in June.
So if I may offer some information on that, if, if we started this April 1st, the meetings, the, the, the committees, there's no committee that meets more than once a month. So, and, and our typical attendance policy is three. So April, May, June, I don't know that it matters that much if we just want to say we're gonna start at the beginning of the appointments. I think an important add-on to this discussion is Eric has sent out to all of our advisory committee members, and the way he structured it, it would include applicants to the committees prior to council appointing them that could come on Friday, April 8th, to his highly popular training session, and entertaining, I might add. Eric shows a different side of himself during, during that event, to learn about that. And that would be a great time to reinforce that those policies are going to be in effect. I gave Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson some perhaps erroneous information that perhaps we had given our advisory committees more time to get settled back into meetings. I have been told, no, our advisory committee members will follow what council does. So there is no expectation that they could continue to do whatever they want till June. So council has the discretion to decide it. The timing may be good that April, at the April 8th meeting, that Eric is informing them that we are reinforcing and reinstituting these rules. I think a very specific mailer to every committee member, new or returning is a great idea, and that we have that in writing. The training would reinforce it, and we're starting with a new flesh, fresh slate with our committees. It is something we told council when we continued our hybrid through March, that this was a challenge we were having with our advisory committees. So we're appreciative that you're willing to address it.
Thank you.
Except I low-key want to go to the training meeting now.
You should come. We all do.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Martha, the, I don't, I can't recollect, but this is all post-COVID, and COVID is still not gone. And this will be in person. They will not be remote anymore. What is the medical excuse? Do we have any policies like that if a person has, or, you know, say COVID, or a medical emergency? Is that an exempt out of those two, like whatever their thing is? How does it play?
It is not exempt, but there is a provision in our policies that if there are, I'll call it extenuating circumstances, that a committee member may appeal to council to, to waive or alter those requirements. So you have that authority to make exceptions for those types of situations already.
But that's on an individual basis, but I was thinking more on a policy basis. Like suppose a person, A, says, you know, he got COVID, he cannot come. And he produces some kind of thing which the staff sees genuine concern, we don't want them coming into our meetings, his excuse. Like the school has, right? Like, you know, at 10 holidays, you know, and then any medical or as an excuse to vacation. I was just trying to see because it is, it, something could happen, and then we don't want them unintentionally be booted out.
I think that we could address that through proactively still conveying that message and that we are prioritizing safety rather than establishing a separate policy for that. We, I don't think we want to be the medical excuse police. And, and we respect our advisory committee members and the time that they put in. And we're not really interested in kicking people off, but we are interested in the committees being able to conduct their business.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. So Mayor Protem Johnson first, and then Councilmember Fender?
So I, I do think we need to get back to an attendance policy. It, it is important for, for many reasons. But Martha, remind me, how many absences is a member allowed in a calendar year based on our policy? Isn't it like three?
Three. And, 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 and there's some nuances that I might need to ask Aaron and Eric, because not all of our committees meet monthly. And, and you've referenced a calendar year, and Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson is talking about a rolling calendar. So Eric, Eric has something to say?
If I could clarify regarding that.
Thank you.
Previously, we did do the absences based upon a rolling calendar, but speaking to Aaron, it was extremely difficult to keep track due to the multiple appointment cycles throughout the year. So just to standardize everything, it was moved to a calendar year rolling cycle, well, to a calendar year absence tracker for the three offices.
And when does that calendar year, is it January 1?
Starts in January.
January 1, okay.
And, and I'll also add, there's progressive notices to the committee member. It's not all of a sudden they get kicked off. We're providing, the staff liaisons are providing a, you're here, you're here. And, and so it's not a sudden type of thing. And, and we have, we have had work, work situations where people are out of town for extended periods of time, that, that, that some have resigned for that. But we, we have some mechanisms in place to deal with some of those unusual or unique situations.
And, and I know we have sent out notice that we're recruiting for our committees. When do you expect council to be voting on those appointments?
Council is gonna vote on the appointments at the second meeting in, in April.
Second meeting.
So now April 25th?
That's correct.
Okay.
And they're gonna receive the administrative report on that, at that first meeting in April.
Okay. So, so I, I, I personally would like to know the attendance of those committee members, and I know you always give us that information, when we go to appointment.
For people requesting reappointment?
That's correct. Thank you. Reappointment. I, I think some have, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna, there's only one word.
We, we can provide that information.
Okay. I think, I think that's gonna be important for me as I choose whether to reappoint somebody or not, even, even knowing that we were very lenient during these two years. I, I, I think if you have never showed up to a virtual meeting in a year plus, that says something about your commitment to a committee. So I, I need to know that for me. And getting back to, you know, I wouldn't, I'm fine with starting this on April 1st, even, even knowing everything you've said. And I'll, I'm fine with waiting till June if you want. I would prefer to know, and I would prefer to let committee members know that they're kind of on notice if they have been lax in their attendance. You know, we're very fortunate. We have committee members that are very dedicated and show up all the time and, and really want to work for the, for the citizens and for the betterment of the town. And there are some that want to be appointed to our committees and can't right now because there are others sitting in a seat that probably shouldn't be there. And so I really think we need to get back to kind of straightening that all out. I, I don't, again, not sure that's the right word to use either.
And as a practical matter, you're, you're gonna appoint on April 25th. It'll take Eric the week to notify people. We have some meetings that are that first week of May. There's a couple of our committees, it's, it's MPAC and MESSC, I think, that meet the first week. You know, but setting that expectation is something you can do. I agree that if somebody's committed to attending, when we start this is gonna be a little bit irrelevant. So sending the message now is, is something that we can communicate effectively as, as we're scheduling the meetings for April. And we have enough time to do that if that's council's preference to start now. Just, and, and I, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson may want to talk a little bit more about her rolling calendar request. I think some of the feedback we got when, that, that was also difficult for the committee members themselves to keep track of, which is why we went to the calendar. Am I accurate, Aaron? Anything else you want to add to this conversation?
Yeah, so I'll just offer a handful of comments. Martha is correct, Eric is correct as well. So this is, I'm about to be entering my seventh year of working with advisory committees, seventh year this summer. And we've seen some changes and some transition in how we can best support and work with our community in that role and best support council with that role. So attendance is one of those things, the way that we manage that attendance and the way that we manage absences. If you'll recall, there used to be excused versus unexcused absences. Everybody always wanted an excused absence so it didn't count against their attendance. So council opted to remove that from your policy for your advisory committee members. You also opted that people were allowed to miss four meetings per year. Well, if you have a committee that only meets six times a year and they miss four of those meetings, that sort of takes away from the effectiveness of that meeting. So that, you all agreed to bump back to three absences per year. We also transitioned away from a rolling calendar of tracking absences because, as you know, we recruit year round, and council can appoint at any time. So theoretically, we could have had advisory committee members who have start dates any month of the year. So it became a little bit cumbersome for staff and, to Martha's point, for our advisory committees to follow terms, starting, ending, absences, tracking. So we moved everyone to a calendar year for tracking. So we moved everyone to a calendar year for tracking absences regardless of their term start or end, just for consistency purposes. Those have worked well for us for the last, I would say, two to three years. Those things are also outlined in the policy that council has adopted for how we support advisory committee members. The follow-up and the outreach for if anyone is struggling with attendance, that is also outlined in that policy. So we, again, we will, will take any and all steps to help our committee, our community members be most effective and efficient in these roles, and we really appreciate your support in this effort, too.
And I just, just one more. I just want to clarify what, make sure there's not any confusion about what I said. These meetings have been offered virtually for two years, and still we have members that have not participated virtually for a year plus. So those are, those are the issues I'm concerned about. And then the last comment I'm just going to make is that I really appreciate our citizens that devote their time and volunteer for these committees. They do an incredible job for us. They advise council, and I know I take, I take their advice very seriously, and that's why we need to make sure for those that are committed to helping that, you know, this is not a morale issue for them, too. You know, I want to make sure that they know we value their work, and we're going to make sure that we have committees of people that are also committed to the work that they all do because it is so important and valued. So thank you. Thank you for, I know it's not easy. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao.
Yeah, real quick, I'm in favor of reinstating the pre-COVID attendance policy. And then just lastly, one small comment. I would suggest handling a COVID situation absence the same way that we would handle before the pandemic, someone getting the flu or stomach bug. If they had COVID, I don't know why that would, we would handle that any differently.
I hear you, and I'm just going to hope that we can stop saying that five-letter word soon, and it becomes less and less of a, an issue for why people either are uncomfortable or unable to attend meetings.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao, please.
Just to summarize what Mayor Protem Johnson said, I mean, I, I think that we're very grateful for the public service of our committees, but I want to really let those know listening online that if you are interested in serving in a committee, you need to commit to serving on the committee or don't apply. I will consider that moving forward, and I would like to look at the attendance because public, you know, these are volunteer positions, but we on the council depend on these positions in terms of your guidance, your direction, the time. And I think that even if we had leniency during the pandemic, I don't, you know, to me, that's not an excuse because whether they had a legitimate medical excuse to attend or a personal reason is fine, but I think that there really needs to be a standard put in place moving forward. I mean, you know, we're a lot bigger town in terms of the things that we're doing, the awards that we're receiving, the body of work we're doing, and we really need people that are going to step up and serve. And we have a lot of people that are doing that already, but I just want to say that for the public record, that that's going to be important for me. If I see someone's only attended two meetings or three meetings, I'm not going to reappoint them on a committee because I don't, you know, that, to me, is what public service and committee service is about. I just wanted, wanted to say that. Thank you.
Okay. I'll chime in that I support getting us started in April. It sounds like April is the time to do that. I'd just be curious if we're thinking about counting any absences earlier this calendar year against? Like if they've already missed two, are they on the hook?
I think, I think Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson and Councilmember Robati suggested from here forward.
I would support going from here forward, and I'd echo some other things that have been said, but I think it's helpful for the committee members to know that their colleagues will be there and everyone supporting the committee and its success. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson to summarize, and then we'll hopefully close this one out.
Great. Thank you so much for indulging the time in this meeting. I know that this is a little longer than I had anticipated, but it's a worthy discussion. And I'd like to highlight a few points that I've heard from multiple council members. First of all, for the current cycle for appointments, any of the current committee members that are requesting reappointment, we would like to know the attendance records for those individuals over the last two years. Because I heard about, you know, attending remotely, yes or no, that kind of thing. I think it's only a subset of the application, so it should not be a significant burden. We're not asking for everybody that's on the committee at this time, just only those individuals that are seeking reappointment at this time. Secondly, I heard from multiple committee members that April 1 is a good time to start the clock going forward. That would mean that staff needs to let the current committee members know that effective April 1 committee attendance will start to be taken for, as written in the policy, and that period will end December 31, where a new cycle of attendance would start in January 1 of 2023. That aligns with staff's concern about record-keeping as well as notification. I really like the fact that there is an April 8, like kind of a committee member roundup, if you will, and that information could be conveyed about the attendance policy and what that does mean, and as well as when people have, if they do miss an April meeting and they haven't been notified, I mean, first of all, they should attend the April meetings if possible, but they should be reminded of the attendance policy if they are on a committee and they don't attend an April meeting. That information is important to us as, if they're seeking reappointment for the appointment cycle that we will be voting on at the end of April. Did I miss anything?
I think that summarized pretty well. Thank you very much, and thanks for bringing this up.
Thank you.
Does staff have what they need?
Eric? Yes, we think we have what we need. Thank you.
What, what time is the meeting on the 8th, on April 8?
6 o'clock?
6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
And while we're kind of on this subject, we had talked about discussing our rules for ourselves as a council at the last meeting in March. So we're at that point now, and I heard during these other discussions that people are interested in continuing with Rule 19 for the near future as well to have that option. Is that true, or do we want to hold ourselves to going back to pre-COVID, which is if you have to participate remotely, you can participate but not vote for up to two meetings per year? So I'm just putting that out there because we said we would touch on this at the end of March, and that's now, if anyone wants to share. Otherwise, I think we're defaulting to staying with Rule 19. Mayor Protem Johnson.
So I think it's important to remember why we have a Rule 19. Rule 19 was initiated because of a health crisis. It was not to make, make anybody's life easier. I don't know how else to say that. It was, it was really related to a health crisis, and so I think to, to keep Rule 19 or to use Rule 19, it really, you need to have a health reason, not, not just that, and I realize we just are changing a council meeting, you know, a month before we're going to have it, so take that out of the equation for a minute. But, you know, it's not, Rule 19 is not meant to allow each of us to go on vacation and still participate remotely. It really is related to a health crisis. So as we're coming out of this health crisis, I think we need to, we need to come to realization that that, we cannot use that as a, as a crutch, and that's, I don't know another word to, I don't have words tonight. I keep saying I can't think of a better word. So I think that that's important to remember in this conversation.
Okay. Councilmember Robati, or actually, I saw, I'll recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson first, and then Councilmember Robati.
So as a reminder to everybody, I'm remote for health reasons because I do not feel safe yet. So I would appreciate if we have Rule 19 available legally, that if there is a situation where one of us or several of us do not feel comfortable attending, whether they've been exposed to COVID or not, or feel that there is a risk, that we have the ability to use that. To blanketly say it's over is premature at this time. Once the governor lifts the emergency order that invalidates the Rule 19 as being permissible, then we will not have that as an option. But I think we need to tread a little lightly. All of us are going to try to attend when possible, but if there is a health concern and Rule 19 exists, we should have that available. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati.
Yeah, so I, I understand that Rule 19 is specifically related to the COVID pandemic, but I guess I, maybe it's two years of remote meetings that, that are in my mind now, but to be honest with you, I, we have four, five council members right now with full-time jobs. I frequently, in the before time, traveled for work. You know, I have five kids. I mean, I don't, I don't actually see that there's a compelling reason if someone, and even to Mayor Protem Johnson's point, if someone is on vacation and they can call into the council meeting, I mean, I think that's a good thing. I don't think that's a bad thing that someone, you know, that someone can't plan their vacation around the council meetings so they go anyway and participate remotely. I, you know, I think that the more flexibility and the more, just the more grace that we give people and options that we provide, I think that's just one more reason that people with demanding jobs can run for public office and be successful in that office. So I don't, I mean, I don't think that we should extend Rule 19, but I do think that, I just don't think it's a bad idea to extend the ability to participate remotely in whatever that looks like after a state of emergency. I mean, even if we put a limit on it, two meetings a year or whatever, but yeah, I am, yeah, I think that's it.
And if I could, we aren't allowed by law.
Oh, well, there you go.
After there would be a state of emergency lifted. We don't have that option unless there is a state of emergency. That's why our existing remote participation rule allows participation but not voting, and, and we limited ourselves. And work sessions are exempt because we, we add those to our schedule, but it's because we just can't unless there's a state of emergency.
Okay, so then forget everything I just said.
Not everything.
Can I, can I just clarify? I'm not advocating that we not allow us to, each of us to participate remotely. We have that in our policy. We do have that already, and it is twice a year that you're allowed to do that. For council meetings, you can do for every work session you want, quite frankly. I'm not, that's not, I'm talking specific, so thank you, Martha, I'm talking specifically about.
Yeah, so Eric's pulling it up for, it's been quite a while. Again, it's regular meetings, a maximum of two. There's requirements to notify and to report where you're calling in from, and it counts, has to be approved by council. There's, there's just some, some processes where that has to be formally adopted as a part of a meeting. Closed session did not allow participation, even participation from, for closed sessions, and we're happy to, to send this out. But it is something we put in for flexibility. It was just the voting that we just don't have that authority through the state legislature.
Okay, yeah, I think I was in office one meeting before.
That is accurate. I, I don't know that Councilmember Fender.
It was never an issue.
Or Councilmember Robati have ever seen this employed, let alone employed it themselves. Correct.
Right.
So I'll just chime in. I, I'm not necessarily comfortable saying that we're going to keep it until the governor lifts the state of emergency, but I'd be comfortable pushing it to end of April and touching on this again, because obviously we have at least one council member who doesn't feel necessarily comfortable meeting in person yet, and to allow some grace, I think that would be something that I would support. So unless we hear that people are really want to abandon, want to discontinue Rule 19 now and speak up in that direction, I think we'll probably allow that. Councilmember Robati.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't want to stay here till 10 o'clock either, but I'm not comfortable with what's going to happen after the governor lifts a state of emergency and Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson may still not feel comfortable for whatever health reasons that she has, which are frankly none of our business. So are we going to say that she just can't vote until she gets okay with coming back in here? That's ridiculous. We can't do that.
That's, that's just the way the legislature has it, and that there's lots of reasons behind that, because then people could use it to just avoid votes that they don't want to participate in. There's, there's lots of, there's lots of history behind it, but I do understand your frustration on that.
I, yeah, I am really frustrated by that. Okay. All right. Sorry, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, I didn't mean to speak for you, but, yeah.
Okay, and nothing other comments? So I know it's a little bit more burdensome for staff to allow Rule 19 as something going forward, but it sounds like we're going to keep that for a little while longer, unless I hear otherwise.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just offer, the burden is if we change the meeting after we've, we've known which way we're going to construct the agenda. So if we know, that does help staff, so thank you.
Okay, and usually by Monday at noon is the latest? That's okay.
We will prepare the agenda as hybrid meeting, and then it's just set up that way. Yes.
Yeah, if everyone's here, we'll just not adopt that rule for that evening. Okay. Thank you all very much, and we'll touch on this again at the last meeting in April.
I'm sorry, did council also want to give guidance related to the advisory committees moving forward?
Can we do that?
Did you not get what you needed earlier?
Well, I think what Eric is referring to is advisory committees model what council does, and our expectation was, and sort of what we have conveyed, is advisory committees would be in-person beginning in April. So you're sort of modifying that for yourselves. We indicated that based on what council had indicated to us earlier, is the expectation would be that we would return to full in April. There was a touch base tonight. I'm, I'm agreeing with that, but do we need to convey that same option to advisory committees for April as what you are imposing on yourselves?
As a, as a mixture there, maybe we don't start counting the absences until May. That way.
I don't think that the two have to go together. You have a hybrid option to participate, or you can come in to participate.
Okay. Were there any committees that were interested in hybrid options going forward?
I think you've got a mix out there.
Okay. Would we like to allow committees to continue modeling what we do? So I see one thumbs up. Councilmember Rao.
Well, good. Good. I think it is fair because if we are doing it, I think, I know it is hard for the staff, but it is fair to them that exactly what we follow. That's my thought process.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao.
Yeah, well, first of all, a couple of points. I think that we need to be consistent. So if we do it for this body, then I think we have to do the same thing for the advisory body. But what I think I do want to be clear, especially for the public listening, is I have had some people email me, contact me, wanting to know when we will, as a council, return to fully in-person meetings along with advisory committees, because there's frustration from other citizens that we may not be as accessible if we're here, and I think the public is ready for that. So I think that I'm fine with extending Rule 19. What I'm hearing from the council, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, is once the governor ends the state of emergency, then we can eliminate Rule 19, right? We would have to be legally obligated to do that. And I think that's an important point to make the public that we, you know, we're not going to just keep extending it, right? So I just wanted to say that for the record, because I do know that right now, not as many. many people are coming in, but as we get through the pandemic and it becomes endemic, we want to get back to, you know, two and a half, three years ago, where we had this place packed with people coming in, wanting to meet us, wanting to talk to us. That's where we get new ideas, when we see people out here in the town, in the dais, from the dais, not on a virtual meeting. So I just wanted to say that I think that's something that we need to be very wary of.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
So I've said this before, I don't think we can expect our citizens to do more than we do in ourselves, so it needs to be consistent.
Okay.
And I'll just clarify in response to Councilmember Rao's comment. What I heard was hybrid through April, not through the end of a state of emergency. Is that accurate?
Okay, well, that's, well, I just want to clarify, through April is fine with me. I just don't want to go beyond April.
Okay. And just a clarification, if something would happen during April with that state of emergency, we would have to comply with the law? Okay.
Yes.
So just like we checked in tonight, we'll check in on April 25th and see where we're at as a group.
I have one question, TJ.
Yes, Councilmember Fender?
So if we allow, I just want a clarification, if we allow the advisory committees to be hybrid, would we still institute the attendance policy or reinstate the attendance policy as it was pre-COVID?
My understanding is yes. A hybrid attendance would count, a hybrid absence would count.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
I'm seeing head nods on that, so that's good confirmation. Town Clerk Smith, do you have what you need?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Town manager, all good?
Thank you.
Okay. Good discussion. Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Appreciate all your help over the years. Okay. Those were our two extra agenda items. We're still going to have one more extra as part of closed session. Right now, we're at future meetings and events. I'd like to just say that Wednesday, the 30th, as Randy Little, our cultural and parks director, mentioned, there's a walk in Church Street Park, and there's also going to be peeps in the park at Northwest Park on the 30th. So please check our website for those things. Western Wake Farmers Market is every Saturday from 9:30 a.m. until noon. They're going to be doing their summer hours soon, but I think it's still the 9:30 start. So please join the Town of Morrisville in celebrating the Hindu Festival of Holy on Saturday, March 26th. Though that was postponed from two weeks ago, but it's coming this Saturday. There will be dancing, some embarrassing, so I'm going to have to learn my dance steps, music, food, and an explosion of colors at Cedar Fork Community Center from 10 a.m. until 2 P.M. that day. On Thursday, April 14th, we'll be holding our annual Easter egg hunt. So that's a Thursday, so that's a little bit of a change. That will be at Morrisville Community Park from 5:30 P.M. until 7 P.M. They'll be split by age groups, because we don't want the little ones being overrun by the older. So at 5:30, there'll be ages two through four. At 6 P.M., ages five through seven, and at 6:30 P.M., ages eight till 10. And it's quite an experience to see the kids run on the field and they pick up those eggs within seconds. It's very incredible. On-site parking will be available. Please plan to arrive early, or even better, walk to the park, as I expect a large number of families will be attending. Morrisville residents, please consider getting certified. The Community Emergency Response Team, the CERT program, educates volunteers about disaster preparedness for the hazards that may impact their area and trains them in basic disaster response skills such as fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, and disaster medical operations. The program will be held April 23rd through 24th from 8 a.m. till 5 P.M., so those are two full days at Fire Station Number One. Limited spots are available for this free training. I've been a member for 10 years, and this is a great group of folks. To register, please visit the town website and type CERT Training into the search bar. And as always, for a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.townofmorrisville.org. This time, we're at Council Comments. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Fender.
I don't think I have any comments. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao?
My only comment is to thank the residents that sent in information through the budget portal. It's a lot of good information in here, to thank you all who did that.
We just all got that tonight in hard copy, and we're going to get soft copies, and we're going to be looking over that. We really love that input. Councilmember Rao, followed by Mayor Protam Johnson?
Just a couple of comments. We had a great holy on the 18th at HSNC. Thanks for everyone coming out and looking forward to the one this weekend, and had the honor of attending NCLM Town Hall today with Deborah Ross and Congressman Price and Congresswoman Ross. I want to thank Mayor Colley for emailing me something, I put it in my newsletter, but for those listening, if you're a veteran in business or disabled, totally disabled or permanently disabled and 65 and older, you can get relief on your taxes this year. You can just go to wakegov.com/taxrelief or 919-856-5400 and get that information if you're a veteran, and we thank you for your service. I did want to ask the staff to continue to explore options for basketball. I think we've gotten some really passionate folks out there, so what I've told them is that we always look for options, and once the staff comes back with those options, they bring them to the council. So I think we can make progress in basketball, and I would like my colleagues to consider that. Not 10 courts, but even if it's one or two courts, that would be great. Final two things, was great attending Wake Tech RTP Building Two ribbon cutting, and I really want to thank President Buxton from Durham Tech and Scott Rawls from Wake Tech, who talked about the collaborative work going on with the two institutions and also the early career high school. It's really exciting what's going on. The final thing is, I just want to thank everyone for celebrating Women's History Month. I'm proud to serve on a council that's a woman-majority council, and we've had so many women trailblazers. I've been reading a lot about trailblazers, whether it's Vice President Harris, Anne Dunwood, the first woman to serve as a four-star general, Serena Williams, Oprah Winfrey, and on and on. But in North Carolina, we've had our own women trailblazers. Elaine Marshall, our first female Secretary of State, who was here in Cary last week talking about businesses, or the first black female Commerce Secretary, Michelle Sanders. And we don't have to look very far to see our own trailblazer, Martha Page, the first female town manager here at the town. So I just wanted to thank, you know, all the women out there that have done really great things, and hopefully, we can continue to celebrate their great leadership in Morrisville and around the state. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
So I also want to encourage everyone to attend this Saturday for our first Town of Morrisville Holy event. The event starts at 10 a.m., and it's my understanding from Leslie, that our new cultural resource specialist, that most of the really good events are going to happen early on, between like 10 and 10:30. So those of us that are in the flash mob, we're ready, we're going to be out there between 10 and 10:30 doing our flash mobbing dance that we learned once, and
Once again, there will be no video.
Yeah, there will be.
So come early. But seriously, it will be a wonderful event, and for those that have never attended a holy event, this is your opportunity to come out and really have a good time, and do not worry about the colors. They wash out of every piece of clothing you can imagine. So I'm a testament to that. And the other thing I want to, I want to just give a shout out to Trader Joe's of Morrisville and especially Manager Rachel Baxter. She has partnered with the Morrisville Community Garden to do some work with them, and I'm very appreciative of that. She's also, and Trader Joe's and the whole team out there have donated flowers here to our demonstration garden that's at the Healthy Food Hub. So I really thank them for being committed partners and good corporate citizens here in the Town of Morrisville, and thank them very much.
Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Yes, I'm looking forward for getting my video ready, so. All right. On a different note, yesterday night, I was walking my dog, and I met a young kids. And the thing that really touched me was during the COVID time, these kids were, you know, came in, stayed in a house, you know, basically sharing two, you know, rooms together. And they got, I thought like we relaxed, you know, during the COVID time. I know when I talked to Michelle, anyone who was keeping the signs and, you know, those, we relaxed. But they apparently got several parking violation tickets during the time, and they were not aware that, you know, Morrisville has the rule, especially the side that you park, you know, like you get $50 or $100 fines based on, you know, how many times. And so their story really touched me. They said they didn't have jobs, you know, they were all sitting in the house, and it was hard for them to pay these fines because they were never aware, because they just came into Morrisville to stay together through the COVID time. I wanted to ask the staff, you know, if that is true, do we know how many tickets were given during that time? Because I thought we had relaxed many of the citations and those things, so I was just curious when I heard the story.
I don't have that answer right now, but we can certainly get you some data on that.
Yeah, because I thought that was not fair to them, especially with the things which were going on. So that was just, I thought I'll bring it up. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
No comments this evening. Thank you.
Okay. I'm bringing up the rear. I'd like to say a happy belated St. Patrick's Day to everybody, and to note that today is World Water Day, so thank you to all our staff and volunteers who participated in our Creek Week this past week, led by Tony Victor and our engineering and public works. Lots of volunteer stuff, a lot of drain marking was done, and it makes the town a better place to bring more awareness to water. I want to congratulate Jack Yan and his family and partners for opening Wayback Burger in the Walmart Shopping Center on Chapel Hill Road in West Morrisville. They're great burgers and shakes. I want to say thank you to Michael Angith and the RDU Airport Authority for hosting the Wake County Mayor's Association on Friday. The continued growth and success of the airport is essential to the economic well-being and the quality of life of everyone here in the greater Morrisville region. I'm looking forward to this Saturday's Holy event, as many have mentioned, at the Cedar Fork Community Center. I need to practice my dance steps, and thank you to HSNC, as Councilmember Rao mentioned, for hosting a very well-attended holy celebration on last Saturday. That was a lot of fun. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Deputy Town Manager Zudma for any staff comments.
Yes, sir, I'm going to turn it over to Jeannie Hooks for some good news.
Good evening, everybody. So our amazing IT department has done it again. So if you haven't heard the news, Morrisville has actually been announced as the IDC, let me get it right, Smart Cities North America winner for 2022, and it's in the category of smart water, again, for our Connected Parks Initiative. And I have to say, the winners in this category are, were able to demonstrate that forward-thinking innovation and aligning creative technology and to our business practices and creating quality efficiencies. So I have to say, I joked with Rick that I think that this, that he's trying to get the most awards in one single fiscal year. So they're up to, I think, three awards now. So if you remember, the other one, what previously was the Smart Cities Global Readiness Challenge and the RTP Tech Cluster Award, and they've also actually been featured in a couple of magazines, one in particular, Toggle, for their strategic innovation and more so their partnerships. And I just have to say, I'm very proud of Rick and his team for their visionary leadership and what they bring, and more so for this particular award, it demonstrates collaboration across departments. So I have to say, I'm very proud of that group for what they have done to Morrisville and really elevating that smart city brand that we have at a national level. So way to go to that crew. I wish they were here, but I think they're listening. So I just wanted to share that with you.
And that was an audience vote, correct?
I'm sorry, that was an audience vote. That's a second one.
So that was people around the country
Yes, sir.
Who voted in favor of Morrisville. So we are definitely on the map.
So we are.
So that's wonderful. It's great that that department is staffed up and doing great work, and we thank our Smart Cities Steering Committee as well, who's very an important part of that. I'd like to say that Morrisville is innovation's home address, and it just goes to show that lots of good things are happening in Morrisville, and that's really because of the staff and the leadership that our woman leader has done. Ms. Page, thank you so much for getting us going in that direction. At this time, anything else? Deputy Town Manager?
Yes, sir, one other. Rolling back to the discussion about NCLM in April, if you are interested in attending, we need to know, please, tonight before you leave, so we can make the registration deadline. So please let Eric know if you are interested in attending April 26th through 28th down in Wilmington for the NCLM conference.
Okay. So before you adjourn, and Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, if you could let him know, that'd be great. Okay. Now we're going to move on to our closed sessions. So we have two closed sessions this evening to discuss matters relating to economic development and a personnel matter. We do not plan on any public business after the closed sessions, so at this time, I would like to thank you all for watching this meeting of the Norrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org, or visit www.townofmorrisville.org/council for additional contact information. At this time, I'd ask for a single motion to enter into closed session, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao, and I don't know if you need us to put the other one on the screen, too.
No, I got it. Six, right? Mayor and council, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143.318184 and 143.318186, I move that we go into closed session for an economic development matter discussion and a personnel matter discussion.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Protam Johnson. Town Clerk Smith will conduct a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to enter closed session passes your names.
Okay, it is 8:21. We are now in closed session.